Everyone, we're going to go ahead and get started with our Commissioner's Status Update. Today's date is April 15th, 2025. The time is 10:00 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Everline Duncan and Mataro. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? None. All right. First item, Justice Building update. It's a discussion item. And do we have David Mendez on the telephone?
Yes, this is Dave Mendez from Turner in Townsend, Herry.
Okay, David, do you have any update for the board?
The spreadsheet that I gave you two weeks ago is still what I'm working from. We do have some pricing. The Skybridge expansion joint pricing came in. I'm waiting for confirmation from the architect. It was, the estimate was $30,000 and it's, the number that came in is $27,000. So I will have that later this week for the board for the next meeting.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All right. Thank you, David.
If I could jump in on that topic as well.
Sure, Jeff.
Update. We've started talking about blinds for the building. And I have some information. We had a, I received a bid proposal from the company in Coeur d'Alene that will be putting them into the Justice Building. In looking at the requests from departments, as I've been walking through the building, there's been a lot of conversation about, well, we need a little bit more privacy in our offices and such. And so we did look at, you know, what would it take if we did exterior blinds throughout the rest of the building where offices are impacted, not necessarily common spaces, but then also interior office spaces. So there would be an additional 127 blinds that would be included in that. And that's a price of $68,651 to do everything. On your desk, I put some drawings and that shows you where those blinds would be included, just so you can get a reference of exterior blinds versus interior blinds. If you look at, if I can walk you through that, on the first page of that, that's the third floor, so that's the prosecutor's office. The majority of the blinds are up there. They've been talking a lot about just needing privacy based off of the subjects that they look at on their computers and in their offices, and they often change for court and, you know, different things like that. So they would like the idea of having blinds for some additional privacy. So you can, you can see the yellow highlights would be the interior blinds, the blue highlights would be the added exterior blinds, and then green are the blinds that are included. Basically, the project is including blinds on the south side of the building for thermal coverage. And then we would be looking at the option of doing the additional blinds. The, the next page is the second floor, not nearly as many blinds. Most of the exterior on the judges' offices there have blinds. There would be a couple, and then there would be a few interior blinds scattered throughout that you can see on that plan. On the first floor, there's a few more exterior blinds on that west side. That would be the area where the float clerks are going to be with some interior blinds in filling for some additional privacy in those offices. And then the basement level would be interior blinds in the area of, on the lower level where AMP is going to be. So if you break that price down, you know, the 127 blinds, that's $540 each. That's kind of an average number because I think there is a difference between the interior versus the exterior blinds. The exterior blinds have a little bit more thermal protection on them from sun rays. And so I asked for some additional breakdown. Can you give me the pricing of the interior versus the exterior blinds? And I do not have that back yet, but I just wanted to kind of start this overall conversation just to continue to update you as we move along and kind of what we're looking at for, you know, overall ideas of that and kind of see where we want to go with this for next steps.
Questions?
Just on the third floor, would it really be privacy? I mean, they're on the third floor on the exterior. So definitely on the interior, I understand that part of it, but I don't know if there's some exterior that...
Yeah, the windows are designed to be pretty dark. You know, when you look at that building, it's hard to see people moving around in there. There might be, you might be able to see a little bit more kind of shadow in nighttime when a light is on interior in the office and it's dark outside. So I think you are correct. You know, you're looking way up into an office in, in those areas. I did talk with Stan Mortensen a little bit more of that, and he felt like maybe they could go away from exterior blinds and just do interior only. So we can look at that as, as an option. You know, if you take the, you know, the bulk of those exteriors were up in, in that area. So, you know, I would guess he could take 25% off of that, something like that, you know, by eliminating those, those exterior blinds.
And then also there's, you're looking at another possible glazing option or something for interior?
We could, we could get some pricing on interior glazing. So look at like an obscure film that would go over those windows as well. So, and I haven't had a chance to dig into that yet, but we can certainly look at that if you'd like that option.
I like your idea.
Of glazing?
I like, I like her idea.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions?
I would ask one question.
So the blind, the blinds that we have currently upstairs in the, in the Commissioner's place, those, those blinds have been up there a long, long, long time. And I hope that these blinds will be just as durable as the new ones.
I would hope that as well. You know, products are not always made the same anymore these days, but, you know, I would think we'd get, you know, quite a few years out of these.
Anything else on the Justice Building? No? David, thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Next up is item two, facilities update. And this will include the coroner lab, the admin HVAC, the jail pods, and the courthouse HVAC. And Director Jeff Voller, please.
Good morning, Commissioners again. I wanted to take an opportunity to update you on several of the projects that we're working on across the county that we haven't talked about in several weeks, just so you understand, know what's going on. Starting with the coroner's lab, we've been working on a concept drawing that the Commissioners approved with H2A Architects. And I, that was in your board packet, but I put a copy of it on your desk so you can, we can talk about it this morning and you know what we're looking at. So in the Pierce-Clayke building, we'd be looking at designing out that autopsy lab. In the northeast corner would be area of addition. So that would be the Sallyport that ambulances or hearses would be able to drive through. We've learned a lot by touring the Spokane coroner's office and also some additional items that would be necessary for a certified autopsy lab. And that includes having an isolation room and an isolation cooler. And those are necessary requirement to continue to be a certified lab because the coroner's office is certified, so we should build the autopsy lab to be certified as well. So with that interior autopsy lab, the isolation, isolation cooler, those are for like badly decomposed bodies that would come in. And then you'd have the autopsy station as well. This is designed to be a phased plan so that we can, you know, basically get an operating autopsy lab functioning. And then Dr. Duke would continue to look for grants to build out the remaining portion of it. So kind of that top, that northern portion of that building is where we'd be doing the phase one. In this, I think there are some opportunities for even additional phasing in this. So right now it's showing, showing three, three stations where you could do autopsies. The initial concept plan that Cory Trapp did for us, we were looking at two stations. And so I think we could rough in for a third, but probably get two functioning stations going. We've got the future CT lab that would come down kind of towards the middle of the building. And even between the coolers, as long as we have the one isolation cooler, we could potentially get started with that and have the space designed for the second cooler that would go in, in an additional phase as well. Our plan is to go out for a CMGC contract with this. That would allow us to get to a guaranteed maximum price. And the budget numbers that we've been using so far were based off of Cory's rough estimates of $1.468 million, including design. And so while the board has not approved any additional funding for this, we are planning to go out next week for the CMGC to see if we can get the contract on board. And once we, we do that, then we would have more additional pricing that we would be bringing to the Commissioners. Any questions on the coroner's lab?
Nope.
No.
Just getting the CMGC on board, do you have to go through the RFQ process and all of that?
The RFQ has been prepped with legal, and I have that ready to go out next week for public notice. And then it would be proposals that would come in that we would review and then make a recommendation on a firm.
Okay. And then at that, that point, we can determine if we're going to go forward in the next fiscal year or what?
Correct. Yeah. Yep. Yeah. That would come with basically kind of a two-phase with the general contractor. So there'd be a design phase and then a construction phase of that. So there'd be a couple of different contracts that we would work through with the CMGC.
I like the idea of the rough in for the third station. There are a lot of steps between here and it actually being functioning, and one of them is the staffing side. And I wouldn't be surprised if this ends up getting built, but not staffed for quite some time because of the cost. And, you know, depending on what's going on at Spokane County.
Certainly.
So, okay.
Yep. One other note that I just caught on here. So one thing I've talked to the city about is bringing in a second approach to that building off of Dalton Avenue. And the city seems receptive to that. I think with the RV dump station, there gets to be a lot of conflict on, you know, Friday and Monday mornings with RVs backing up there. And so we are looking at the idea of doing a separate approach into that coroner's office as well versus the shared approach that goes into the dump station and then turns into the coroner's office currently.
No additional sidewalk repairs?
I can't promise that.
Sure there will be.
No? Okay. All right. Well, I'd make sure I'd ask that question.
Right.
All right.
Okay. Moving on with other projects. So the admin HVAC, as you know, we put that one out for bid. The pricing came in at $2.1 million. We had $2 million budgeted, but really the construction aspect of that, we were hoping to be around $1.7 million. The, I've talked to a lot of the contractors that were participating in that. They were a little bit afraid of just kind of the uncertainty of how we were going to scope the work because we are still running daily business through here. So there was a lot of evening and night work planned for that. And I think we can eliminate some of that, maybe not 100% of it, but I think we can put it out for rebid. And I would propose using the CMGC contract approach with that. We thought at first this might just be a mechanical project, but I think with the scope and nature of this work of doing 72 units throughout with all the grid work, the drop grid ceiling that you see in all of these areas, the mechanical contractors wanted to use a general contractor to be the, what you call prime on that job. And so talking to some general contractors as well, they feel like that CMGC model would probably be a better one for us. That way we can get them on board, come in, work towards a target budget. You know, if there's a reason we have to go over that budget, we can be really upfront about where we are with that and what we're looking at with that. But I do think that we can bring it in, you know, at least probably cut a couple hundred thousand dollars off that by going with that GC model and having that more upfront approach as we plan and scope and sequence that project. So the plan is to put that one back out in two weeks using that CMGC to bring a GC on board and start to kind of replan that project.
I do. I know that, you know, we're looking at replacing just the unit itself, but also doing work inside the building?
Yeah, there's 72 units that are in the ceilings. And so that's where we're doing the work. And so like, for example, this room has three of them in the grid ceiling. So, you know, this room doesn't have as much impact because, you know, we couldn't have meetings in here for a couple of weeks while we do the work. But we have to remove portions of the ceiling to get up to remove and replace the units that are in the ceilings. Where we're going to have more impact is like across the hall where we have them over DMV and Department of Licensing. Those are over office areas mostly, not so much up into the public area, but there will be more impact to those departments. And so with bringing the GC on board, we can get really concise on saying, okay, we need this area for eight days or 12 days, or what is that going to look like? And how many people are we going to impact? Can we move them to a new location? So we really have a team on board that we can have those conversations upfront versus the contractors that were bidding it, just kind of throwing larger numbers at it to make sure they were covered on their costs.
Okay. Okay, I guess so. On to the next item.
Okay, jail pods. So Sletton has mobilized. They have their job trailer out at the jail right now. They're working on getting ready to start doing the curb work. So that's the sidewalk and curbs on the government way side of it. That will start next week. And then they will move into starting to do the footings for the rec yards, and then we'll be moving inside to start doing some of the metal framing. So that project is starting to get underway and just wanted to give you that update. And then with the old Justice Building HVAC system, we have got the plans ready to go out for bid. So just a reminder of what that project entails, that's going to be replacing the ground chiller. That's that old green box that's out by Courthold. That's the one that gives us so many problems that continues to go out all the time and needs to be reset. So that ground chiller will be replaced with an updated model using a water glycol system to, to run the chilling through that air, that chiller. It will be replacing the air handler in the basement. That's what basically pushes all the air through that building. And then we're going to do an alternate for the rooftop unit because that can be a standalone project. So if the budget comes in high, we can have that as an alternate to decide if we want to do that one or if we want to defer that one to another time. So that will be an, an alternate that will be bid on that one. And that one is set to go out for bid on April 18th. And one thing, just to kind of get you thinking about this as well, on the new Justice Building being built, the, we're using a train control system. That's a new control system. That's the computer program that allows us to go in and, you know, set temperatures and see if something's working, see if something's malfunctioning, set temperatures up and down, change from heating to cooling, you know, that kind of thing in that building. As we put this equipment into the old Justice Building, we will put the new equipment onto that train system. However, kind of similar to this one, they have basically controlled dampers throughout that building that also control the amount of airflow that go to all the different locations throughout that Justice Center. It would be nice to put all of that on the train control system so that we have one system versus right now, we would have two systems that are running that, the HVAC controls in there. The rough idea of that is $129,000 to put all of that onto the train control system. That was not part of the original budget, but it's something we could consider doing as part of this project as well. So just want to kind of throw that out there for you guys to start thinking about that and decide if that's an area that we want to go. And we can talk about that as we move into kind of some future budgeting, but I'm just bringing that out there for conversation for the future as well.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do. On the train control system, is it best, is it least expensive to do it at the same time that the work is being done or is that, can be down the road?
It could be done down the road. It's really kind of in separate areas. You know, we will do the, the areas that we're working in. You know, with, with running that train control system, we have to put control modules at every unit in the ceiling, and those are areas that we're not going to be working, you know, currently with the upgrade of the big portions of those systems. So there might be a tiny bit, but not a lot.
Is, are the train control systems considered, you know, one of the best out there? Because I know that there's three or four.
Yeah, there's three or four. We've been having quite a few problems with the Johnson control systems that we, they're just becoming old and outdated for us. And so, you know, train is the new, you know, one of the newer up and coming technologies.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? No? Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
All right. Item number three, B O C C employee access. This has my name next to it. And really what this is, is just something that I've always kind of noticed since I've been here. And it's just, it's not the way that I normally have operated with my own staff, is the access to the B O C C office. And, you know, the three of us have key fobs to get in and the staff don't. And so I figured I would just run it by the board. If there's no objection, that we could get key fobs to the balance of the staff up here. I've talked with IT and I've also talked with Director Voller about it, and it doesn't seem to be a problem.
What's the cost?
It's negligible.
The key fobs are really inexpensive.
Okay. So then if other departments want that too, is that something the B O C C would consider?
Well, other departments have access to our office from my understanding. So I'm only talking about, you know, our employees that have, that have this key fob access. Right now it's set low, so people have to bend over and push in numbers. And, and so really it's just a matter of our employees in our office getting access to our office.
Oh, sure. But I mean, there's just other employees who also have access to their offices via keypad. And so I just was wondering if that's something the board would entertain that as well?
If there, if their managers want to bring that before the board, certainly we can talk about it. I mean, we're talking about a negligible expense. I think we're looking at the Justice Center giving proxy cards, which most people would end up having that.
Yeah, I think the overall idea, talking with IT, is that eventually we would transition the campus over to proxy cards. You know, bringing that proxy card network into the system within your Justice Building will allow us to have that. And then over time, you know, over the next several years, we can start to, you know, go to more of the proxy card access to all of the doors in the admin building.
So we would do away with the fobs at that point and trade them for proxy cards?
Yeah. And the fact is that a lot of offices, the doors are not locked, so there's no need for this. It's really just in our particular office, the door is locked. And that's really the reason why I'm asking. So if there's no objection, I'll go ahead and give direction to our Director of Building and Grounds.
No objection.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The next couple items are in executive session, so I'm going to go ahead and have public comment first before we do that.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Hartman. I know you're all registered Republicans, and I think you all declare you're conservative Republicans. I just wanted to mention last Saturday's press, the front page, Idaho GOP leaders announce new DOGE task force. I think it's led by Representative Crane of Napa, issued a press release Thursday saying that Idaho House and Senate Republican leaders jointly announced formation of the Idaho DOGE Task Force, part of a united front. The three areas they're going after, they decided to take, have the task force focus on three areas. First one is government-agency consolidation. Second one is government employee travel. And the third one, eliminating unnecessary state government employee positions. I think it'd be, we got the federal government doing DOGE, we got the state doing GOGE. I propose the county needs to have a task force and identify maybe three areas to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anyone on the line? No? Okay. Well, we can move on to items four and five. It's executive session, and I'll take a motion for both.
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 742061F and 1D.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Mataro?
Two AM. I'll take a motion to exit executive session.
I move that we exit executive session with staff to proceed as discussed.
Second.
Commissioner Aberline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Mataro?
Aye. And 10:52, meeting adjourned. Thank you.